I guess so.
An escort.
He's retired.
Calling the December 12, 2018, meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Present.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Present.
Commissioner Hudson.
Present.
Commissioner Maruzzi.
Here.
Commissioner Woods has not arrived. Vice Chair Calerdyne.
Present.
And Chair Wermick.
Present.
Six members present. We have a quorum.
Is everyone else's mics working?
Will you note for the record that Commissioner Woods just arrived? Okay, can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, December 6. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
We're going to the acceptance of the agenda. There are a couple of items on the agenda. People who are here may not know that this is an all-day meeting. And we will be breaking at what time, Flynn, for lunch?
We will break at noon for lunch.
And come back at?
At 1:30 PM.
So, people who have, and I'm not sure exactly how many items we will get through by the noon break, but there are a number of items that I don't anticipate we will get to until the afternoon. The question really with the agenda is, is there a finite number of items we should go through before the break so that people who are here will know that, when their items might come up?
Madam Chair, it's difficult to anticipate the amount of discussion that will occur with each item. I would guess, just based on past experience, that we'll be able to get two items, two F or two G, before noon, and with the remainder of the items coming up after our noon break. What I would recommend is that we have public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Those members of the public who wish to testify on public hearing items that may come after lunch are more than welcome to testify at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you.
So that we can consider their comments as part of our deliberations on those items.
And then, in terms of the agenda, we have consent calendar items, one A, which is minutes, and one B, which is a gate entry. We've had suggestions from the commissioners as to putting other items on the agenda, on the consent calendar. Unfortunately, almost every item on the consent calendar today, with the exception of 3A, is a public hearing item and therefore cannot be moved to consent. I have had a recommendation that we move item 3A to consent. I'm wondering if we have, if there's an objection to it in the commission?
I had some comments.
So, it sounds like we can't move that to consent?
Not necessarily. Huge comments.
Madam Chair, as an alternative, the Planning Commission could consider consent and then move 3A, continued business, up ahead of the public hearings, if that's the chair's?
They're not here?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they, I don't, I think, so we can't, we have a person who wants to speak on it, so we can't move it to consent. Therefore, every single item in front of us is, will be in front of us today, and at this point in time, can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
When do we move, remove items from the consent calendar?
When we get to the consent calendar. I think, do we need to remove them now?
No, when we get to the consent calendar portion of the agenda.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move the agenda, acceptance of the agenda.
Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is the time for public comment. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on consent calendar and other agenda items and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. For people who intend to remain, you should know that items 2A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L are all public hearing items, so that you may address the commission on these items now, or you may wait till the public hearing and you'll have another chance to address the commission. The public hearing is now open. Any members of the public who'd like to come forward, please do so.
Good morning. My name is John McCoy, and I live in Andreas Hills, in Palm Springs. I'm speaking as a...
It should be, I have the podium mic on. It should be red.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, speaking as a private citizen today, I am, I've been noticed on project at 3A, the Pinnacle Point Development, because I am also the alternate rep for the Andreas Hills Neighborhood Association, and I have been following this project closely. Want to start out saying, "The quality many of us value most in the Cattell Valley and Palm Springs is our mountains." Andreas Hills, where the Pinnacle Point Project is located, sits in a bowl surrounded by this beauty. You, as a Planning Commission, have been the stewards of maintaining our mountainside beauty. We are asking you today to continue your protection of our natural beauty. This project does not attain the level of standards expected by the citizens of PS, and we seek denial. In reviewing the project, I understand the developer has met many of the concerns. There are still questions in looking at the grading plans and the, even the dimensioning plans. It seems to have selective dimensioning. There's not, every dimension line is not filled in. The planter bed that was added at the back edge of the pool, I believe is intended to soften the break between the open space and the pool. Turns out, it's a thin line that's planted with barrel cactus, and it's still a seven-foot drop-off from the, based on the grading plan, it's a seven-foot drop-off. It appears in the renderings, he intends to put very large boulders to break up that wall, but there is no dimension line given from the property line to the edge of the pool that I could find in the existing package. Retaining walls have been brought down to six feet, but there's still, the general concept of this house on this site does not seem to be appropriate for the hillside lot that it sits on. In looking at an aerial view down at the house, you've got a swimming pool and a wall of glass facing south. You've got sunlight coming in, reflecting onto glass, onto the sitting area. This is just not a comfortable space to be sitting in. As a custom home, in a custom home neighborhood, this could be built much better. So, we ask that this particular home be reconsidered, that the site be reconsidered, and a home be put on it that actually would work better on the site. There has also been some submittals in your package regarding some of the letters that, an approval that was submitted from the president of the Pinnacle Point HOA, and another letter describing some of the contentions of the other owners within the development. So, I hope you have a chance to look at that. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Paula Auburn. I've been a resident of Palm Springs since 1999. When I first spoke about this project, which is the Pinnacle Point Project, and I'm not able to stay until this afternoon, so I'll make my remarks now, it was to the advisory, Architectural Advisory Committee, and philosophically, I'm against hillside development, period. I understand that these homes will be built, so my remarks will be contained to that. I am concerned about environmental impact, not only this, the pure environmental impact for building on a hillside, but also for the aesthetic impact. Tourism is our driving economy here. Eco-tourism is one of the fastest-growing sectors of that. People come to look at our magical, mystical mountains. If we build on them, or if we allow projects such as this to go forward, which are not high-quality and not of good architectural design, and that do not fit into the landscape, we will be impacting in a negative way our tourism industry, particularly as that eco-tourism grows. I'm concerned about this fitting into the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Is it something that fits in with what's been done in other housing developments? Does it fit in with the quality of the three existing homes? In reading through all of the staff reports and tracking this project, I've nicknamed it a ping-pong ball project, because it has been back and forth and back and forth so many times, that I had to ask myself, is this a serious developer, or a person delaying for time, or in some way playing games? Because most, most good developments may go back and forth a couple of times to get minor things worked out, but not like this one has been sent back and forth. Some of my original concerns about the white, original color and the white landscaping rocks have been addressed. I called it, with the white color proposed originally, a UFO landing site. My remaining questions are this. I wonder if the requested simulations have been done? Did the developer at any time meet with the surrounding neighborhood organizations? Do we have notes from those meetings? Did the developer go to the HOA, which is an existing HOA for the homes that are already built? Or does the developer, in fact, control that HOA, so that any proposal on his part, that he had been to the HOA for any approvals, is in fact a bogus claim?
Can you wrap up?
At this point, I would like to defer, ask you to defer to what the neighborhoods and the neighborhood organizations in that area would like to see done, and that you give preference to that. Thank you. I'm sorry I ran over.
Hi, Tom Ford again. I'm gonna keep looking down, because I get a little flustered. Each time I come here. So, I'm in the neighborhood, and we're not out to get the developer, and, but once he leaves, we are the ones that have to look at these houses for the rest of our lives, literally. So, again, I'd like to just go over the things that the neighbors on my street, Ridgemore, and some of the changes I see have happened, but each time, the renderings are not complete. The, he never brings an architect or an engineer, so we can, so you guys can ask questions. But what we'd like is landscaping to be natural, like the existing houses, especially on South-facing slope, which I see he's put in, that the overhang that he has in the back, which my house faces south too, and he's got way, a lot bigger windows than me, than me, it's not practical not to have an overhang on that side for the people that live there, because that space will be unusable. That we keep to the low-level lighting consistent with the dark skies ordinance, that the landscaping in front be more naturalized with no semicircles, none of that, just more naturalized to blend into the mountains, that the color of the house blend into the hillside, that the, I don't know if the engineering on that pool, that slope right now from the last rains, the back slope is starting to erode. I don't know if that's building safety, but someone should look about with that pool and that seven-foot retaining wall with what's going on with some of the erosion that's happening right now. Well, that's just what I've said every week, every time, but thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda McAllister, and I'm here to support the people that have just spoken on this pinnacle development, and I'm a homeowner. I've been in Palm Springs for about 15 years, and we all moved here for a certain type of beauty and untouched beauty of the mountains. I'm also for development, but controlled development, and I think you've heard some very specific things that the developer hasn't provided, and I urge you not to approve this project until you get those things. And we have a more complete project, so we don't have something that mars the beauty of what we all moved here for. Thank you.
Morning, everybody. My name is William Mills. I'm the owner and founder of Next Level Vaping, located right next to the Hair of the Dog. I've known Larry and them for some time now, great stand-up guy. Hair of the Dog's been an iconic bar in the city of Palm Springs for a very long time. We all know that. I'm actually really excited to have him as a neighbor. Hope you guys will see the same thing that I'm seeing right now and keep that tradition alive. Not that much of a good speaker, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission during public testimony? There being no one else?
Sorry, I was so slow. Paul Hendrickson, Palm Springs resident. I'm part of a tribe, and that tribe is concerned about a highly sensitive cultural site that may be threatened. Affordable housing, it sounds like I'm jumping around. Affordable housing's important. We're passionate about it. We believe that mandate should be met and even exceeded. Density bonus. I'm talking about that, because a highly sensitive cultural site that I'm talking about, I'm a member of architectural enthusiasts. We identify as a tribe because of our passion, our innate passion about that. So, a tribe isn't always identified by its DNA. The Wexler Steel Frame Homes, there is a low, I mean, a affordable housing project being proposed there, where they want to apply the density bonus. That, I understand the importance of this density bonus. I understand why the state has implemented it, but my concern is that it's not used at the cost of negatively impacting such a historically cultural site as architecture here in Palm Springs. Right now, as I speak, there's a billboard on the 10 freeway with an advertisement for Modernism Week. Its sole imagery is one of the Wexler... Its sole imagery is one of the Wexler Folded Roof Homes. It drives tourism, a very critical sector of tourism that brings to Palm Springs the identity we use in our motto, "A place like no other." Architecture is important in Palm Springs. And I'm just concerned that density bonuses could be used in places that could negatively impact such important sites here in Palm Springs. So I'm hoping that those are considerations here and going forward when applying those density bonuses. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? There being no one, the public hearing is closed. Consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to pull the minutes of October 24th.
The minutes of October 24th are pulled. Anybody else before I go to the items? Okay, we have the minutes of October 3rd, 2018, and October 10th, 2018 is 1A, and 1B is door brand for a minor architectural application to install a vehicular entry gate at an existing multifamily residential property located at 600 North Bolardo Road. Do I go to the item that's been pulled first, Flynn, or can I go to the vote on the items that remain?
It's our typical practice to consider the minutes together. And so what we might do, let's go ahead and take the comments on October the 24th, and then we'll have you vote on items 1A and 1B as a single vote.
Commissioner Calrden.
Yes, on, I guess it's page here. Page four or five of the minutes of that, of October 24th, under public hearings. Item 2A, second paragraph. I want to do some rewording of this. And I think it misstated my, my problem was here, because I've raised this issue several times. I just want to make sure we get the right issue listed here. The second sentence should read, "He thinks they need to look at standards for physically detached residents on a common condominium lot within multifamily zoning as a separate item for future commission review." Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And we'll go back to the tape and verify. That's indeed the statement.
That's what I meant. Hopefully, that's what I said.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, with that change, I don't know if there's any others.
Does anybody else have changes? Does anybody have a problem with that change? Can I take a vote on the consent, a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Can I get a second, please?
Madam Chair, I have to note that I'll be abstaining on the vote of the meeting minutes of October 3rd, as I was not present at that meeting.
And I would like to add that I'll be abstaining on all three, since I wasn't at either, either of the three.
I think on October 3rd. Fine. Can I have a motion, please? Oh, we do. Okay. Can you, can we vote on it, please? It passes 6 with 1, 6, 0 with 1 abstention. Okay, public hearing items lost. Moving on to 2A, Las Palmas Brewing on behalf of Larry and Connie Bramwaith for a conditional use permit to allow for a cocktail beer lounge and accessory brewery at 461 North Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report, please. And do we have additional materials on this? Do we need a moment, should we take a moment to look at those?
Yeah, Madam Chair, you did receive one letter in regards to this item.
Mr. Newell, we have one letter, some pictures from one of the commissioners, and some suggestions from one of the commissioners. Is that correct?
Correct.
Has everybody had a chance to look at this? Can we get the staff report, please?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Planning Commissioners. The application before you is a conditional use permit to occupy an existing commercial building located at 461 North Palm Canyon Drive with Las Palmas Brewing LLC. The applicant intends to operate a brewery, a nano-brewery, as well as a beer taproom, offering a selection of beer and wine from their own selection, as well as others with other various, from other various breweries. They do intend to offer a selection of coffee, tea, and packaged snacks. There will be a total of 17 indoor seats, 20 outdoor seats at the rear of the business, and five seats in front of the business. Their operation would be from 12 noon to 12 a.m. daily. The site currently contains no parking, so that is an issue that we have addressed in the report. As you'll note on page 5 of your report, staff prepared an analysis of the requirements of the business as it relates to the downtown parking combining zone with respect to the seating, as well as a variance that was granted in 1963 for this site, granting a waiver of four parking spaces. With the total proposed seating, the requirement is to have a total of 7.4 spaces. With the waiver of four spaces, three spaces, three additional spaces would be required for the proposed business. So as a result, the applicant would be required to pay parking in lieu fees, because there essentially is no viable options to establish parking onsite. The total payment would be required of $7,233. So that is a condition that staff is recommending as a part of its, the draft resolution before you. Staff also reviewed this application with the fire and police departments, and the fire department has responded with some additional requirements that would be required, or that they are recommending, primarily related to the adding fire extinguishers, posting occupancy limits, and some other fire safety protections at the business. The police department has requested that the applicant comply with the noise ordinance, work with the police department cooperatively if there are issues or complaints, and complete a walkthrough of the business to determine if a safety or security measures are necessary. As I noted, the site does intend to improve the front of the building with a new patio space, and so that would result in a new patio barrier per ABC requirements. So the plans for that are attached to your report. Staff has prepared, recommended findings for you in your staff report, as well as in the draft resolution. And as I noted, we are making a recommendation of approval for this project. The conditions that I would like to just draw your attention to in the resolution relate to the brewing aspect of the business. So staff has established, or added condition PLN 2 in the draft resolution in regards to the brewing onsite. The intention here is to essentially allow an accessory brewing facility and not allow a full established brewing operation. So we have added PLN 2 to limit the amount of barrels that would be created annually to 1,000. So additional requirements related to odor and gas, so that there are no obnoxious odors emitted or detected from the business. The applicant, as far as entertainment goes, does not intend to have live bands, but they do have, they do intend to have music in the background for the interior of the business. So we do have a condition here, PLN 5, to ensure that they are in compliance with the noise ordinance. So that's PLN 5, and administrative condition 10 with respect to the decibel limits. The last one I'd like to draw your attention to is the in-lu parking fees. As I noted, based on the deficiency, there is a requirement to pay $7,200. So that is part of the conditions. As I noted, you did receive some additional photographs from one of the commissioners, so that commissioner may wish to address the commission with some additional items with respect to maintaining or upgrading the frontage of the building. And you did receive an email from a neighboring property owner regarding the proposed business. So staff responded to the questions from that email. And I did note that his correspondence would be provided to you today. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and that concludes my report.
Before we go, can you answer the questions in the letter that came from the adjacent business owner?
Sure. So, just give me a copy of that. So they had a question regarding noise. And as I noted in my presentation, the business intends to have essentially background noise on the interior of the building, so that would not be an issue. With respect to odor, the applicant has described the potential of odors in his letter, and staff has also recommended a condition to prohibit any odors that are obnoxious of any kind. In respect to parking, I believe we've addressed that with the requirement to pay in-lu parking fees in response to the garbage, request for garbage, or question on garbage. The applicant, there is no intention to add any additional garbage bins. There are receptacles at the rear of the business, and those would be, the applicant would take those to the trash enclosures in the nearby parking lot. And then lastly, in respect to the grease trap, there will be no grease trap for this business nor kitchen that would require additional improvements to the building or result in removal of grease from the site.
Commissioner Hirschbein, you had written some questions. Are yours questions, or are they? Do you want to ask them in the form of questions?
I actually had some additional questions.
Please start.
Okay. In terms of odor, I guess I'm not at all familiar with microbreweries. Do they typically have odor issues emanating from the facilities?
For typically, in a manufacturing district, you may have some odors that result from a larger-scale operation. The size of this operation is what's known in the industry as a nano-brewery. So it's much, much, much less than what you typically might see in some sort of more industrial areas. So that's, again, why we've limited it to 1,000 barrels. The ABC has allowances for 60,000 barrels or more, or 60,000 barrels or less. So this is much, much, much smaller than that. But there is some potential for emitting of steam, and that is, may result for the process. And the applicant may be able to explain this better, but based on my discussions with the applicant, the smell is not obnoxious, and it's, will not be obtrusive for the area.
And if it's deemed a problem in the future, what is the fix? Is there a code violation, or is there a violation of the, you know, the proposed requirements under the proposed approval?
So if the conditions are adopted as recommended, it would essentially be a violation of the conditions.
And then what would be the, I'm sorry.
Can you just identify the condition?
Yeah, PLN 2.
And what would be the fix if it was deemed violated?
Well, we would contact the applicant and notify them that there are some concerns with this issue. And if there's any remedies that they may consider to, you know, remove the odors or the smell, then we would go that path. And ultimately, if it become a nuisance, it became a recurring nuisance, the commission has authority to recommend counsel's revocation of the permit.
I have another question. You may not know the answer to this, but I'll ask it. In terms of the barrier between the public right-of-way and the patio where there's alcohol to be served, is there any kind of statutory requirements about that barricade? Like height, density, thickness, opacity, anything along those lines?
My understanding is it's very generic, and they just require that there's a barrier, and ultimately, it's up to the local jurisdiction.
Okay.
But a barrier does have to be in place.
Right. But there's not a height limit, or the pickets have to be at a certain distance?
No.
Or anything like, it's not like a handrail over a second story, or?
Right.
Anything like that. Okay. Thank you. And then I did have those, I did send the email out about my feelings about the facade, but I think that's more of a, what? Well, I sent the email out about the condition of the facade and my feelings about what should be done about it, but I didn't think it was a question, so I.
The question you raised to me was, is it appropriate to condition? Are we able to condition this?
Oh, okay.
And that with requirements in terms of facade improvements.
Okay. So I thought I got the answer to that, but I'll ask it anyway. Yeah, my, on site inspection, I noted that the store facade is in very bad condition. It's dilapidated. And I recommended some, I'm recommending some changes to that. And under, I think it was condition, or finding E, is that right? Finding E, would we be able to condition the CUP on something like that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions, going to Commissioner Donenfeld, and then back across this way.
I have a question regarding parking. What is the historical tradition with respect to areas in the central business district where you have just a few numbers lacking based on the code? Is it discretionary with respect to the planning commission of the city to allow a payment in lieu fee for the missing parking spaces? Or is it mandatory? I mean, if it's under a certain threshold, like this is three, must we allow the applicant to pay in lieu of parking spaces? Or can we, do we have the discretion to say it's unacceptable and turn down the project for the lack of the spaces, since it doesn't meet code?
And that's, it is up to the, you know, there is the commission's discretion to allow a in-lu payment. However, the council has adopted a process by which applicants can make that payment. So it's, it is up to the discretion of the commission. If this is, if the commission rejects the proposal, and the applicant, or, excuse me, the property owner would then have to find a tenant that would meet current requirements or not exceed the downtown parking combining zone allowances for the four spaces that they have essentially been waived.
Do we typically allow this in-lu situation where we're dealing with shortages within the central business district?
Yes. It's only in the central business district that this occurs.
And it's ironic, isn't it, that that's where we need the most parking? But it is discretionary with us.
Yes.
As to whether we allow an in-lu payment or mandate the parking spaces.
Madam Chair, let me just jump in and clarify. What Mr. Newell has said is that if this is not approved, then the use would not be able to go into this location. The parking code does require that you provide adequate parking places onsite for. The parking code does require that you provide adequate parking places on site for your business. In this situation, there's a change in use where it's going from a retail use to a restaurant use, if you will, which is more intense in terms of the number of parking spaces that are required. City council has set up a process to waive the onsite parking spaces for payment of an in lieu fee. And it's separated by an in lieu fee based on an existing building versus an in lieu fee for new construction. But again, as Mr. Newell has said, if you don't approve this in lieu fee, the business would not be able to locate here, and they would have to seek another location.
Thank you.
Commissioner Calorine?
Question on that.
I think Commissioner Calorine has the floor.
I just wanted a follow-up question on that, if you don't mind. So if we don't approve the in lieu fee, could we approve the CUP anyway? Could we approve it without that condition?
There would be no point because the business would not be able to locate there without adequate parking.
So it would, it's either the in lieu fee or no business? That's the, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Calorine?
Yes, I have a question on the site plan, and maybe David can answer it, or maybe later the developer would be more appropriate. One confusing item is there is about an eight-foot space between what is marked on the site plan as the existing sidewalk, and I'm looking at sheet A1 dot 00. And the proposed front patio is about, looks like an eight or 10-foot space there that it's not, I'm not sure what's happening in that area, and that's right in front of the fence, between the fence and the street. So can you tell me what the plan for that area is?
Yes, and if you'll forgive me, I meant to go through the slides on the screen. So I'll jump to that slide here. And this, this is just, again, the aerial of the property, some photographs. This actually might help you with that. You see, the green area is where essentially the fence would enclose the seating behind or closer to the bottom of the photo is the remaining sidewalk area. So it's essentially would be an open sidewalk space beyond the enclosed patio.
Where part of the green area would be remain and be part of the, essentially is an extended sidewalk.
Right. That's correct.
Okay.
And what I also note is that you see the business to the right on this photo, it does have an enclosed outdoor arcade, if you will. And so this would be in line with what is occurring along the street front.
Commissioner Hudson?
Thank you. David, I'd like to go back to planning condition number two specifically to the capacity, the production capacity of the nano brewery. I don't know if you can provide this or if the applicant is here, if they can provide some sense of scale of that, 1,000 barrels. To be frank, I don't know what that means. And I guess that follows into B of planning condition number two, the odor, which I would assume is a fairly major concern for the neighbors. And I guess the question perhaps more for the applicant would be, what would be the containment techniques or technology rather for odor containment if that became a problem? Is it in fact something similar to our cannabis odor that we've been discussing lately? So perhaps if, if we can request that of the applicant if they're in fact here?
Yeah, I can answer the first question that you had with respect to capacity. One barrel is approximately 62 gallons, would produce 62 gallons of beer. So, you know, that can equate to about 6,200 gallons annually. But in terms of how that, how much odor that would generate, you know, that's ultimately something that's subjective, I guess, to a certain extent. And also, the applicant might be able to explain a little bit better how that might impact the area.
A follow-up, perhaps it's in the staff report, and I apologize. With that amount of beer, is that intended to be for just onsite consumption? Or are they planning on selling that beer elsewhere?
I'd have to actually have the applicant address that.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Marudse?
Yeah, I have a question about just parking in general. So for an indoor seating at a restaurant, it's four spaces?
Yes.
But for outdoor, it's eight?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Why would that, and why would there be a difference?
Well, this ordinance has been in place since probably the 80s or 90s. And so it was established at that time, my guess would be that generally, your restaurant interior seating is going to be used more regularly and more often than the outdoor seating in most cases. Not in all cases, but, and I think that was probably the reasoning at the time.
And you agree? Glenn?
Commissioner Woods, questions? I have one for Flynn, which is going to the amount of the in lieu fee for parking. Do we, is it within the discretion of the commission to raise that amount to a amount closer to what it would cost to build offsite parking so that we could raise it to, say, $10,000 or $11,000 per unit?
Unfortunately, it is not. The fees were adopted by the city council via a resolution and would need to be modified by the city council as well. Excuse me?
In what year did they adopt it?
I believe it was in the 1990s that that resolution was adopted. If there is a recommendation from the planning commission, what we can do is forward that recommendation to the city council that they reconsider the fees that were established for the in lieu program.
We did forward, am I correct? Didn't we forward that recommendation to the city council, the only other time that I remember us approving this, which was another brewery?
See, I don't recall if we did at that point in time, but we'll be certain to do that with this case.
And can we condition this on the city council increasing that dollar amount or postpone it until they take action?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I would suggest that the commission not do that because we have no certainty as to, you know, what the council may do with respect to the fee setting on this one. I think really the commission's options here are to either approve the project conditioned on the project finding parking, which as Flynn has mentioned earlier, may be an insurmountable obstacle for the developer, or to approve it with the in lieu fee as set by current council resolution with a recommendation that the council, you know, take another look at this fee in the future.
And question for staff for, for David. In the back patio area, that looks like it's a fairly open area. Could not some of that have been used for parking, or does it not have access to the street?
There's no access to the property for a vehicle. The rear of the property butts.
Okay.
Yeah, the rear of the property butts a pedestrian walkway, and that's probably about six feet wide, maybe eight feet at most. So there's no access to the site for vehicles aside from the street, Palm Canyon.
And would the railing essentially go to where the green? I think there's two different colors of sidewalk. Is that where?
Yes.
Where it would go? Okay, I think, are there any more questions on a follow-up? The matter is now a public hearing. The applicant has 10 minutes to make a presentation, followed by comments from the members of the public, and then three-minute rebuttal. Is the applicant here?
So thank you and good morning. We are Las Palmas Brewing. We're a family business with two managing partners, myself, Samuel Gill, and Ray Romero. We are residents of the valley, and we will be operating this business ourselves. We hope to become the first brewery and beer garden in the city of Palm Springs. We are the veterans, we are veterans of the service and beer industries, but this is our first endeavor as owner-operators. This project has been over two years in the making as we've evaluated and searched all over Palm Springs and even outside of the city for a suitable space for our business. And we are very excited to have found this location, the heart of the central business district, that we hope will be a great community gathering space for locals and tourists alike. We're also very thankful to have very supportive landlords who share in our vision for the Now regarding the business and its operations, I will talk specifically to the brewing operations as I will be the person doing the majority of the brewing on site. And so essentially, to address some of the questions from the, from the panel, a two-barrel brewery, just to give perspective, some of the other are basically the two largest breweries in the valley. CVB is a 17-barrel brew house, and they're brewing many times a day into much larger fermenters. And La Quinta is at 15-barrel batches. So like David said, a two-barrel brew house would be, wouldn't even be considered a microbrewery, it'd be considered a nano brewery. So this is frankly slightly larger than what someone would be doing in their garage at home. So our business model is significantly different than a CVB or a La Quinta in the sense that one of the questions was, you know, would we be distributing this beer? And the answer is no. The entirety of our production would be consumed in-house. And frankly, that, to us, is one of the biggest draws of having a nano brewery is the sense that the only place that you can find this beer is at our brewery. So in terms of our goal to be a community gathering space, we imagine it similar to, from our experiences in the industry, how people enjoy going and visiting a winery to see where the production is happening, to see who is making the beer. So this will be truly us creating a product in the central business district. To quickly address the concerns regarding that, once again, this is very far from a industrial production. You know, the size of the kettles are somewhere around two feet wide and maybe four or five feet high, so very small. And then in terms of, it's also unique that we're putting in a electric, fully-electric brew house. So there will be no gas in the building, so there will be no odors from gas. The only byproduct of the brewing process is steam, which we are, we've also been able to address in the sense that we will be able to purchase what's called a condenser. And a condenser simply captures steam, you apply cold water, and instead of the steam being vented out to the open air, it would turn into water and just go down our drain. So essentially, there would be no, you know, byproducts that would be entering the, the public space. What else? I can't remember all the other questions. Starting the brewing process. But anyways, I'll turn it over to Ray, who's going to speak a little bit about the beer garden and the bar itself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ray Romero. I was born and raised here in the valley. I moved away to San Francisco for about six years, gathered my experience, met Sam. We decided to move down here and start this project. We both believe that this is a very essential, very needed gathering space for, for the following years to come. In terms of what we plan to do with this project is to essentially keep everything very small, very private and intimate. So the actual gathering space inside wouldn't be much larger than this room here alone. And like they mentioned before, no live loud music. Everything would be in regard to the appropriate decimals and same with the outside. We also anticipate to set our hours to end at appropriate times. We don't plan on keeping the place open past after midnight, but most likely 11:00 PM. And we simply just want to introduce amenities that we find necessary and that we love in other cities and bring it to this place, Palm Springs, that we love so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this? There being no members of the public who wish to speak, you have three minutes for rebuttal on your own presentation? Assuming you're not going to take it, but is there, if there's anything else you wanted to say?
I guess just that we're, we're hopeful and excited for our project.
At this point, if members of the commission have questions of the applicant, I'd like to have you stay here and have the commission ask their questions so they become part of the public record. Commissioner Hudson? And then we'll go down toward Commissioner Woods.
Yeah, I hate to sort of keep harping on those, but if you could just respond to the comment or question about odor. If I looked at your plan and I'm correct, the brewing component is contained in a separate room. Is that correct?
So it is in a separate space in the back left portion of the building. There will be essentially a curb, so the best way to describe it, we always, we always describe it as simply like a open kitchen. So it's not a closed-off room. And really, the reason for that is we are hoping to introduce the brewing process and the idea of it to people, so we don't want to have it kind of cordoned off to the world. But what I was, what I was mentioning regarding the condenser, that would be the only, that would capture the only possible aroma from the brewing process. And just for those that are unfamiliar, the best analogy for the aroma that comes from the brewing process would be baking bread. So it's steam, it smells a little bit like baking bread. And one thing I did want to clarify is with this small of a brewing process, we would only be brewing most likely once a week. And the portion of that brew day would, that there would be aroma or coming from, or steam coming from our kettle would be two hours of that day once a week. So just for the idea of, you know, as, as they were mentioning before, this is far from an industrial process where there's five batches being run every day, seven days a week. This is one batch, and your concern regarding the aroma, we feel like we've addressed it with the condenser.
Other questions for the applicants? I have one if, I'm looking at number, planning commission number two, and just asking you if, based on what you've said, if we say that no gas shall be used in the brewing process, it says that none shall emanate, that wouldn't create a problem for you?
No, we have a fully-electric brew house. There will be no gas.
And then if we, we require that you have a condenser to cap, condenser or similar technology to capture steam during brewing, that wouldn't be a problem for you?
No.
And also, if we ask that you respond to complaints within 24 hours of notification, would that be a problem for you?
No.
Okay, I think those, those, the other questions is we've had some comments regarding the storefront and the look of the storefront. Have you, have you been thinking about any improvements yourself to the storefront in terms of what it would look like? I don't think there's anything in our packet that suggests upgrades.
So to be clear, we're not the building owners. And so we have a certain budget for our project that did not include completely redoing the facade. But we are, as mentioned, installing a front patio where people can enjoy beverages. And thus, we will be absolutely cosmetically upgrading the facade, whether that be a new paint job, addressing your concern regarding the awning, that is fine for us. And we will be, you know, I guess the best way to put it, touching up the windows in terms of removing the current glazing that has the verbiage and whatnot. So. So I'm not sure if that appropriately addresses what your concerns are, but with the front patio, we do hope to make the building look very cosmetically upgraded.
And did you receive, did Mr. Newell send you a copy of the email that came from Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
And those conditions appear acceptable to you? I just, if you have concerns, this is the time I'd like to hear them.
Yes, we did receive the email. And we understand the concerns of the upgrades. However, that is, like we mentioned before, that is, we are a small business. It wouldn't be in our budget to inherit those upgrades, especially because a lot of them would require, what's the word? Some exterior architectural upgrades that would really drive up the cost of our project. So, I mean, some things we just simply cannot afford to do.
Is the landlord, the property owner here, would they please come forward?
My name is Connie Barra. I'm a with, and I am one of the owners. Yes, how may I help you?
Yeah, we've, there's some items that have been identified with the storefront in terms of its condition.
Okay.
And some requests from our commission, the question is, are you willing to do these things? Remove the awning, redirect the roof drains to conceal, to conceal within the wall cavity, remove and relocate miscellaneous electrical devices on the facade, demo and remove the storefront glazing and the door system and replace with new. Demo and remove the existing planter at the storefront base and extend the paving to the storefront, reface the existing solid storefront area with new exterior plaster and for this to come back for a review.
I, this is the first I've heard of this. I need to have the paperwork before I would even begin to answer that.
Yes.
Thank you for coming before us. These were my comments. So I come from a retail architectural background.
Yes.
And typically, when a tenant, particularly a food or beverage use tenant goes into an existing space, there is some negotiation between the landlord and the tenant as far as any kind of upgrade to the property and who's responsible for it.
Gotcha.
So I was wondering if that kind of discussion has taken place between you and the tenants?
Any discussions we've had thus far, basically whatever, what it came down to, whatever they wanted to do in there, as long as it met code, they were welcome, they were free to do so. We put on a new roof, which means that I really hesitate to start playing around on drains on the roof because I just literally put a new roof on. The paint, yes, no problem. Like I said, to redo the whole glazing thing, I need to see what it is that you're talking about.
Okay.
And I can work with the guys, because we've been working with them all along. But like I said, I just need to, I need to have, to see what all the concerns are and see how to address them.
That's good.
Some of them are probably going to be fairly simple, but nonetheless.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
Since I'm here.
Are there any more questions for the owner or the applicant?
I'm a bit confused about the amplified noise. If you look at planning number five in the conditions...
That one I know nothing about.
No, no, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We, I thought it was mentioned that you might want music outside, but the planning condition says no amplified music outside. What are your plans with respect to outside music?
So no live acoustic music outside, it would just be stereo, like a small speaker, just like a normal dining area, just to create ambiance.
I'm curious, maybe I'd ask staff, what is, in the ordinance, what is meant by amplified noise?
So the noise ordinance has a number of stipulations in it with respect to decibel limits, as well as just some general requirements in terms of what can be permitted outside, you know, people with instruments or amplification of loudspeakers, things like that. So in this condition, what we've done is we've allowed, we've noted that entertainment or music may be permitted inside. Now, you've heard from the applicant that they do not intend to have any entertainment within the interior aside from background or ambiance speakers. However, if there is, if there is intention to have speakers outside, we would recommend that those be limited in terms of the noise that would be permitted. So it should be, we've had conditions in the past where we've noted that outdoor music may be permitted and only serve as background to the, to the people having conversation outdoors. So it would be an intention that it is creating ambiance, sound and not a loudspeaker essentially. So we could add that as a condition as well, if that is...
I would like...
The commission's pleasure.
On the same topic, where's the closest residential to this? It's the closest residential is the next door. I was going to ask the question of typically, and we've seen, I remember doing Zeldas years ago, we basically required that the doors stayed closed and there not be music outside and that music could not penetrate outside if their residence is nearby. So I just want to ask you, you looked at this condition and thought you could have music outside?
I mean, only, like I mentioned, just for ambiance, we wouldn't have anything blaring. We would be more than happy to keep doors closed.
The matter is, thank you so much, the matter is before the commission. Yeah, I have a suggestion as to how we proceed. My suggestion as to how we proceed is that we continue this until our next meeting to give the applicant and the owner a chance to look at the facade issues, that the commission raise the concerns that we have now, but that we not take a vote on it until, until, we continue it until our January 9th meeting for action.
Madam Chair, I might add that we request the applicant discuss the possibility or scheduling of potential ambient or ambiance music on the outdoor patio in the rear of the property. Perhaps there are options for certain times of day and so forth, but maybe they could come forward with some plans or ideas.
It's not in front of you right now, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
I would support that motion. And again, I would encourage the applicant and the landlord to have a discussion about financial responsibilities because it's in the main part of our downtown, it's next door to a very upscale antique business. And it, I'm all for this project, 100% I'm behind this project. I think it's going to be a great addition to the city. I think it's, but I think it deserves to have a fresh face. I think the face that it's presenting right now is very unfortunate, it's kind of sad looking. So I would encourage the landlord and the tenant to get together to decide the shared responsibilities.
I'm going to just go down through Commissioner Hudson and around for comments for the applicant before we take the, we have a motion to continue, and we have a second, I believe, Commissioner Calorin and Commissioner Hirschbein. But before we vote, issues and direct, sort of directives to staff and the applicant?
I'm not as concerned about the ambient sound. We're in the middle of the central business district on Palm King and Drive, and if there is residential adjacent, it's on Palm King and Drive. So that would be less of a concern for me.
Commissioner Woods, do you have comments?
First of all, I think the foundation of our city is based on small businesses. I think this is, in essence, a very wonderful small business that's needed. It fills a niche that's not out there right now, so I applaud you for moving forward. I think it's also very difficult with small margins for small businesses to get started. So I'm glad that we have an in-luffy on a site that obviously cannot provide parking. It's much better than a vacant building in that location in our central business district. I also am not concerned about the ambient music that goes on there. I think we have a noise ordinance if it were to get out of hand. It appears at this point that the resident and the conditions resolve the odor problem. If, I do hope that the landlord and the tenant can kind of come up with a facelift, as was stated. Other words, I'm in full support of the project.
I would agree with what's been said.
What I would like to see is the condition two rewritten to indicate no gas, a condenser or similar equipment to capture steam and a response within 24 hours for odor complaints so that we deal with that. And so as a little strengthening of that ordinance, I am concerned about the music. And I agree with Commissioner Hudson that there should be some language, if it's going to be outside, that limits it and also that hours get limited so that it's not, it's not intrusive for the residential, the mixed residential-commercial neighborhood that we have.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Can I ask staff, is there a standard decibel level that we could apply? Maybe we may not have it today, but to apply to outdoor music in general, when it's just background ambiance, maybe set it at 45 decibels, or I don't know what the right number would be, but it should be fairly simple to come up with a maximum number for outside ambiance-type music.
So that's a request for staff.
Well, if the second one...
No, no, it's, at this point, I had the floor, so I'd like you to wait until we've finished. In terms of the parking, I'm very much in support of the project and very uncomfortable with the fact that Council has not looked at this issue since the 80s. So I would make a strong recommendation to Council, if I weren't terming out in a day or in a few days, I would just say that I wouldn't be comfortable supporting any more approvals with this until Council takes action. But I do think Council, to have a fee that doesn't escalate and that doesn't cover the cost of new is, is a, it's a problem for parking, especially in our most difficult district. So if something comes, when something comes back to us, I'd like that recommendation to Council to be included in the actions that we take. And I, you know, parking, I think here in some sense will be less of a problem once the Andaz is built, because there will be public parking across the street and it will increase the parking. So I, you know, I would have a lot more concern about parking if the Andaz parking, the public parking portion of it weren't going in. Anybody else for comments?
One other issue, Madam Chair, that probably should be discussed a little bit more detail. I was a bit confused reading through the staff report and some of the comments, and that pertains to trash. This is a strange site in that it's landlocked, and I've heard mention or read comments pertaining to the location of dumpsters and sort of shared location of those dumpsters. And I too support this project and want to see it go forward, but I think there needs to be discussion about those dumpsters, how they're shared and who takes care of the trash, basically.
And so having a discussion about trash and a specific identification of it when this comes back to us. Commissioner Hirschbein?
Thank you. I guess I would say blanket, operationally, I'm not as concerned about some of my fellow commissioners on this regarding signage, I'm sorry, sound, odor, even trash. This is a very small operation. We have codes in place governing those issues. I think the staff conditions address them even further. So operationally, I'm not at all concerned about this project. But I just want to add one more architectural comment, and that has to do with a question I brought up to staff earlier about the barrier between the public right-of-way and the front patio. I would look at that again, it's rather generic-looking now, and it's more like a handrail for a second-story condition, and it can be much more decorative, could even be a planter, it could be just different things. It doesn't have to look like a generic apartment, a bear, a handrail at a second-floor walkway. It could be much more decorative than that. And I'd encourage them, as part of the exercise when we meet next time, to present something a little bit fresher-looking there. Thank you.
I think at this point, we've had comments from everybody. Clearly, we don't have complete unity on where the comments have gone, but at least the applicant and staff has heard them. Can we have a call on a rereading of the motion? And then can you call the vote?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, just for purpose of the record, the motion on the floor which was seconded is to continue this item to the meeting on January 9th.
We're here.
With the changes that we have, that were suggested.
Right. I don't have, who is the motion maker in the second?
Calorin and Hirschbein.
And Hirschbein. The continuance, motion for a continuance passes unanimously. Yes, we can take a five-minute break, 10-minute break. We'll never get back in time. We'll never get back in time.
I got my system down.
Right, there's so much on this. Okay. I did 10 minutes. When is 10 minutes up, do you think? Calling the December 12th meeting of the Planning Commission back to order. We are moving fairly slowly, but for the audience, most of the items before us today are pretty complex. So I'm sorry that it's taking time, but I believe it will. Okay, 2B, Hair of the Dog. Palm Springs LLC on behalf of A&amp;J Palmas LP for a conditional use permit to allow a cocktail lounge at 555 South Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Planning Commissioners, the application before you is a conditional use permit to establish a 5,040-square-foot cocktail lounge within an existing multi-tenant complex located at 555 South Palm Canyon Drive. The business is proposed within a portion of an existing 7,500-square-foot retail space on the ground floor of, previously occupied by Barkingham Palace. The business, so going through some of the slides, the business is located, as I said, within this multi-tenant complex. It does, the complex is encompassed by South Palm Canyon Drive, Ramon Road, and Bellardo Road. The specific building in question here is shown and outlined in a dash yellow line. And this is the existing storefront as of last month. At the rear of the business, so this would be the parking lot side of the building, showing the patio and walkway areas. And then this is the side-facing Camino Parasela and the side-facing South Palm Canyon Drive. So you see here in gray, the business is proposed within this Suite A111. And the floor plan includes 65 indoor seats, six outdoor seats, and a newly proposed patio adjacent to the rear of the building. The business proposes to operate from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. daily. And the liquor license being requested is a Type 48 with the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. So that is for a cocktail lounge serving beer, wine, and distilled spirits. No requirements for food service. The general plan designation of the site is within the Central Business District, and the zoning is Plan Development 282, as well as an underlying zone of C1, which is the retail business zone for the city. The use is permitted by a conditional use permit. And as I've noted in my staff report, there is adequate parking based on the mixed-use development requirements in Section 93.06 of the zoning code. Staff forwarded this application to various departments, and the Fire Department has provided recommended conditions for the project, and the Police Department also has provided recommended conditions. And so those are attached to your draft resolution. And I'd like to just draw your attention to some of those conditions now, so that you're aware of the recommendations before you. Staff included the typical administrative conditions, including compliance with the noise ordinance. The business does propose to operate in indoor entertainment, and you'll see that on the state, as there is a stage on the floor plan. On the screen, you see it here on the top left. We also have the conditions related to permitting indoor entertainment. And as I noted, the Fire and Police Department conditions are included. Staff has prepared a recommendation of support of the project and provided findings in support of the application. And as I said, the draft resolution is prepared for your consideration. The item is a public hearing today. You have received, in its attachment to your report, an email from a neighboring business in opposition to the proposal. And he has provided a letter to the ABC, which was also provided as an attachment to your report protesting the proposed liquor license. So staff is available to answer any questions you may have. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Questions for staff, starting with Commissioner Donenfeld?
I noticed in the planning conditions, there's talk of a security plan. And I also remember, I believe, several years ago, there was a request by 7-Eleven to locate a facility in Sun Center. And the neighbors were quite concerned about the kind of people who frequent the center. And already, there had been a lot of problems with loitering and some minor, I believe, minor crime incidents around there. Did the applicant go to the communities around the neighborhood and to the proprietors in the center to seek their comments regarding this proposal?
In my discussions with the applicant, I have not heard that those motions or steps have been taken. I will say that the public hearing notice was provided to all neighborhood organizations within a half-mile of the site. So neighborhood organizations were aware of the project per the public hearing notice. But I'm not aware if the applicant has reached out to other tenants in the center or neighboring communities.
It isn't a requirement, but it's usually suggested practice, is it not?
Yeah, it's more, I think our procedures outline a recommendation for new developments. We always do recommend that, yes, if applicants reach out to neighborhood organizations, that that is also a step that is taken, though.
David, I also noticed on the property, there are doors everywhere in this property on all sides, except for the southern side. What is the applicant planning to do to limit the access to the bar itself? It looks like, from the plans, that some of the doors are just being deleted and removed. Is that correct?
So you see here on the floor plan, there are three doors for pedestrian access, one at the top middle, near the bottom left, and then one at the primary entry, which is adjacent to the parking lot, on the right side. My understanding is the primary entry on the right side of this exhibit is the, only the entry for the site. But I'll let the applicant clarify that when they make their presentation.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
In terms of jurisdiction and process, I read a letter that was in our packet regarding an ABC protest. So for a minute, if we assume that the applicant is able to acquire a CUP, which is a city action, I think, is that correct?
Yes.
The CUP is a city action, and the ABC is a state agency. Would, based on an appeal, would the ABC then be able to overrule the city action?
No. So the city's action would be to allow the use. However, the applicant also has to get a license from the ABC to begin operation. So it's a two-part process. The CUP on our behalf, on the city's portion, and then he has to go through the ABC as well. If either of those are not approved, then the business is not permitted to operate.
And does one need to go before the other?
The CUP has to go before the issuance of an alcohol license.
Okay, so, again, assuming that it's approved at city level, they then take it to the ABC. Is that how that works?
Yes, the ABC will not issue the permit until the CUP is approved.
That's one of the conditions of approval for the ABC?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yeah, David, I'm looking at the floor plan. And the report states that the space in question is a little bit over 5,000 square feet. And yet, I would estimate that probably a third of the floor plan has hatched indications on it, and three areas saying, basically, not in use. Could you explain, are there future plans for that use? Is that part of this leased space? Do the occupancy calculations take into account that square footage?
So when this application was initially submitted, staff had indicated some concerns with the 7,000-square-foot cocktail lounge. So that, those areas that RCC in gray is hatched, not in use, would include the 70, it's actually 7,551 square feet previously for retail. And so intensification to a restaurant or near occupancy type of use, we had some concerns with that. So the applicant had reduced the scope of the floor plan. And ultimately, that may become a future expansion at some point. Or, you know, at that time, we would have to amend the conditional use permit. But for now, it's not a part of the business. And I'm not sure what the applicant intends to do with that space, but would not be part of the operation for the cocktail lounge.
Are there questions? Commissioner Maruzy, Commissioner Woods?
David, there's a lot of windows and a lot of glass facing Palm Canyon in particular. Do we have regulations outside of having to put in a condition stating that they'll remain transparent?
There's no regulations in the municipal code or zoning code in terms of what has to occur for storefront windows. But we could have some conditions addressing that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kalorjanian?
Yes, I have one concern about the site, maybe for Public Works. The extension of Camino Parasela on the, I guess it's the south side of the building, becomes a very awkward intersection, if any of you have been in that, where those two shopping centers come together, Sun Center and this one, where that road kind of splits off into the parking lot for this building and the extension of Camino Parasela, which is hardly even a road at that point, and then the parking lot for Sun Center. Have we looked whether that's the appropriate way to handle that intersection? If we get more use out there, which I certainly hope we do, is that going to be workable?
It is a signalized intersection there.
Not, I'm talking about the internal one.
The internal, oh, the internal portion?
That's a private road, private property. It's not anything that would be under Public Works' purview.
We don't take a look, we don't even review those?
No.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Hair and the Dog is a, was an existing or has been an existing business for a number of years, am I correct?
Yes.
Have you pulled police reports, so we know what kinds of complaints or what kind of business it's been?
No, we have not pulled police reports. As I did say, we did route it to the Police Department. And their response was with, to provide the conditions that you have in your resolution.
And then, we have a letter from a neighbor that says they are running a alcohol and possibly drug recovery facility upstairs, and that there are two of them in the building. Can you possibly, I have two questions about that. Can you go and show us where the walkway is and how close the entrance to this would be to the entrance to the facilities?
Yes, so what I'll do is I'll show you on the aerial view first, and then I'll show you a photograph that shows that as well. But this is the building, obviously, here. And the business is going to be located in the ground floor in this space here. There's a staircase adjacent to the parking areas for access up to the second floor here on the west side of the lower portion, or the southerly portion of the building. Adjacent to that is the elevator.
And we're able, in the CUP, to consider that concern from the neighbors in terms of the conflict of the two uses?
So, yeah, and just going to the photograph here of the parking lot side of the building, you see between the palm trees, the primary entry to the proposed business is through the dual doors. And then, to the right of those palm trees is the elevator and staircase.
And could we limit the entry so it wasn't from this side, so that the two didn't conflict? To make the main entry from the front?
Yeah, you could condition the project as you see fit.
And then, the building facade, the building at this point in time, from either orientation, looks fairly deserted and not well-kept. Were there any plans that were associated with this that would be improving the street frontage and the rear landscape, or any presentation of the building?
We have not received any exterior improvements beyond the proposed patio. So that's essentially the only exterior improvements that are proposed. I'm not sure if the applicant can discuss further, any talks that they may have had with the owner with respects to landscaping or exterior facade improvements, but...
I think, are there more questions from the Commission before I open the public hearing? Thank you. The public hearing is open if the applicant is here. You have 10 minutes. And at some point, if the owner is here also, that would be good.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Charles Kohler. I am an attorney. I have, this week, my office is in Carlsbad. I used to be here. Matter of fact, Mr. Batanti, who is owner of the Hair of the Dog, was my very first client when I started practicing in 1991. So he and I have a good relationship. Unfortunately, I haven't made much money off him because he doesn't get very much trouble. Larry has been in this town running a business since 1972. He opened Churchill's Fish and Chips, which is in the vicinity, I believe, of Pete's Hideaway now. It is Pete's Hideaway. And in 1973, it converted slowly to the original Hair of the Dog. It was in that location for five years, until it moved up to Alejo in Palm Canyon, where it enjoyed 20 successful years before the landlord there decided that he was going to do something else with the property. So Larry found his next spot, which was dead center downtown, and was therefore in another 20 years before that landlord decided to sell his building also. So we come before you, not because we like to jump around, but because we couldn't buy the buildings we were in. I want to address a couple of issues first off. And as his attorney, I am very, very upset about this. I direct your attention to that letter that was attached to the staff report by Mr. Anderson. And I can tell you, we will be instituting legal proceedings against Mr. Anderson. Because if you look at the attachments to his ABC report, specifically Paragraph 6, it makes the absolutely defamatory statement that Mr. Batanti has been convicted of a felony, specifically one involving moral turpitude. Mr. Batanti is a lieutenant in Coast Guard Auxiliary. He has been vetted by the FBI. He is a member of Homeland Security. He has served in all of the major floodings that have taken place through Homeland Security and FEMA. And I can assure you, lady and gentleman, that he has zero criminal record, zero. And I find it offensive that that's even in here, because I think it was an attempt to turn you folks against him when it was absolutely not true. Mr. Batanti has been a servant of this city for 48 years. He has been involved in Christmas parades. He has been a part of this city, and he is an upstanding citizen. And I find that absolutely unacceptable. And if I had my power today, I would ask you to strike it from the record, but we'll go through it and through the normal legal means. But I just wanted you to know that none of that is true. As far as the neighborhood, we waited to see if we got any comments back from the neighborhood about the project once the notifications went out. Had we gotten a negative response, we would have met with the neighborhoods. We didn't receive any, so we didn't do that. We did speak with almost all the businesses there, including Mr. Anderson, about what we were doing. And he was the only one that posted any objection to the project that is. I have received letters from Zeldas saying, "Welcome to the neighborhood. We have been working cooperatively with the surrounding businesses to make this a good addition, this kind of new extended entertainment district for downtown Palm Springs." Hair of the Dog is a kind of a city landmark. My wife is a flight attendant, she has been for 26 years. And she tells me that one of the most oft-heard questions from people on her airplanes is, "Is the Hair of the Dog still here?" It is a landmark for this city. And it has conducted itself with corporate responsibility and with cooperation with all city departments. The reason that the Police Department probably didn't say anything is because Larry is more than willing to work with them on whatever security plan they want. He has always done so. In 45 years of a bar, he has had two citations from ABC for an improper act. Both of them were solved with minor fines and taken care of. He has great relationships with all the governmental bodies. And we're here to say, we are going to meet all the conditions that the staff has put on there. And I'm more than happy and willing to discuss with you any further concerns you might have. Like I said, had this building not been out, bought out from under him, he'd still happily be operating and servicing the people of this fine city. And Mr. Batanti's here, if you would like to ask him any questions.
If Mr. Batanti wants to speak in this portion of the public hearing, which is his statement, he's welcome to do that. We may call him up later. So if you want to speak, please. No, that's fine. Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Well, this gentleman, basically, you've got, I've had distribute to you what I was going to say. However, this gentleman pretty much covered it all. All I can ask is, please don't punish the residents of South Palm Springs and the rest of Palm Springs for the lack of foresight of one person in putting his business where he did. As a permanent resident in Palm Springs and a longtime customer of Hair of the Dog, 14 years, and we've only lived here for four years. We were visiting here, hiking on the mountain, and drinking at Hair of the Dog afterwards. And incidentally, a good drink, especially at Hair of the Dog where they know you, is a necessity after going to a city council meeting. Anyway, I urge the Planning Commission to approve this conditional use permit. And I just hope to see Larry again in a month or two. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? There being none, the applicant has a three-minute rebuttal. And if you don't have a statement, if you'd come forward in case there are questions, and if Mr. Batanti would come forward. Are there questions for the applicant from the Commission? Commissioner Keller-Dan?
Yes, sort of building on something you said earlier. Is there any possibility of having an entrance off Palm Canyon Drive, either in addition to or as an alternative to the one from the parking lot? And that we're trying, is the city to make, activate the streets more? And I don't know if it would work on this site or not, but would it be possible to have a Palm Canyon Drive entrance?
Yes and no. Yes, there's a possibility. There could be an entrance there. I would not put one there, simply because it's on a very busy street, and people who have to get out of the cars and all of that, would have to get out in that traffic, which gets very speedy right down, coming down the hill. And the parking where the car would have to go is in back. 250 spaces back there.
Yeah, it's going to make it, it conflicts a little bit with our objective of having a more pedestrian environment, that people don't have to drive. But I understand where you're coming from on that. Do you expect much crossover between your customers and Zeldas, or any of the other liquor-serving locations there in the Sun Center?
I didn't understand the first part of that.
Zeldas is located in the Sun Center.
Right, they're in the Sun Center.
Do you expect much cross-traffic between yours place and Zeldas? Are they a different market?
Ethan and I get along fine. He could have been here today, but he, no, no problem. We share the parking. He's at a different time busy than we are. And there's, no, no problem.
Do we have any issue with pedestrians going through the lot?
No, they already use my parking lot a little bit.
Okay. I think that's all the questions that I have.
Commissioner Donenfeld?
Regarding security plan again, have you sat down with the Police Department yet and put together a security plan for the site?
I have not sat down with them, no. But we have a security service, that there is always one security person there every hour that we are open. And on busy nights, et cetera, we have two. And all of them will get their guard cards and the other documents they all need from the city.
These are all certified registered security agents that you use?
Well, we didn't have that requirement up at the old location. They will all get trained and get all the, and I have a gentleman who is in charge of the security. We've already removed a few derelicts and things like that. And they're not liking us because they can't sleep underneath the awning and against the windows and stuff. So I think it'll be very good for the area in showing the people that you're not going to be sleeping and, you know...
And whatever plan you have, will eventually be reviewed by the Police Department to make sure...
Of course.
...they sign off on it?
To answer your question, Commissioner, we saw that the Police Department wanted to work with us. And our first phone call, when we get our vote here, is to call and set up both with police and fire to make sure that all of our conditions are met as are set forth.
The other thing I noticed is your patio really is accessed through what you call nonusable space. It's the hatchmark space. So how will that work? Because the patio is not adjacent to what is usable space, it's just a door.
I disagree with what you said, sir. There's a direct...
I was just looking...
Right from the entrance is a direct into the building. And there's two doors, in and out, and right next to it's the patio door. Three, actually, three doors on that side.
But it goes, it looks like it, you enter it either through what is not in use, or you enter through something called a lobby.
Well, I see, I see the wall there on the right of the door. You walk right into the bar. It's a straight entryway. I'm sorry, I don't...
I don't know how I can show this. I see a door.
Madam Chair, I'll go to the floor plan.
Go ahead, would you, David, because I'm a little confused.
So here's the primary entry here. There's a, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a little, there's a door currently...
Yes.
...right next to the patio. So I'll show you it in the photographs here.
So you would enter the patio from the outside, not from the inside?
No, only, only from the inside.
Only from the inside.
This door exists now, and this would be the primary entry as it's proposed.
Which comes from the lobby. What is the lobby? It's not in use?
Yeah, the lobby, yeah, you can access it from this lobby, or I guess this foyer area.
Reception.
The lobby is the entrance to the bar self, itself.
Okay, and there'll be like a reception desk there or something?
Yeah, it'll have like pictures of Palm Springs past.
All right, I got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hudson?
Yeah, thanks. Earlier, I brought up the space which is indicated as not in use. Do you have any hope or plans for expanding in the future if this location's...
Eventually, in the future, if we get to be very successful, and we think we can expand safely, we will come back to the staff and whatever with our new plans.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any upgrade plans for the exterior of the property? It looks pretty...
Please, don't be offended, but your pictures are terrible. Very bad contrast. It actually looks very nice over there. I have no plans. I'm only a small cog in the landlord's fixing up of the building. And it's always been neat. And it's desert-type water-saving landscaping, but it looks nice. These are a little washed out, these pictures. You're not really getting a good picture of them.
Is the owner here?
No, they're not. They are, they are out of area owners.
The landscaping, can you go back, David, to the landscaping? And you go to the back. The landscaping looks very washed.
That area in front is not mine. That belongs to Zelda's side.
Ah. And this?
That's right near my entrance with palm trees. And they have succulents and cactus and rocks, like the zen rocks that are in there.
Yeah, thank you.
There, there's a good picture of more. And by the way, could you leave it on that picture a second? On the right there is the locked entrance to the upstairs, to the stairway. And it's only accessed once in a while.
That's the, that's an access for the upstairs tenants?
That's the upstairs access and the elevator.
Is there an upstairs access through the front of the property?
I'm sorry?
Is there an upstairs access through any other portion of the property?
Not that I'm aware, but I can't get up there to find out.
I'm not, I'm not aware of any, any frontage 111 entrance. When the Bureau of Indian Affairs was up there, you went up that staircase.
This is the matters before the Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Hirschhorn?
I'm in support of the project as conditioned by staff. I'd be against conditioning this on relocating the entrance. I think that a facility that serves alcoholic beverages is a part of our society. And the fact that it's close to another facility that's trying to keep people from consuming alcoholic beverages, I think that's just how... consuming alcoholic beverages, I think that's just how cities operate. There's, there's, there's conflicting facilities that could, could exist close by one another. And if, if recovery is predicated on not walking by a facility that serves alcohol, it's not a very strong program. And I, I just don't, I just don't want to.
Please?
I just don't want to condition this on any changes to the entrance. I, I, I think the entrance is in the appropriate place. It's next to 250 parking spaces. I think the, the part about putting the entrance on Palm Canyon could legitimately cause some sort of traffic problem if, if people get dropped off in the front. And I don't think it's appropriate to ask them to do it for a number of reasons. So I, I'm in support with, with the staff. Conditions as written.
Given your speech, would you make a motion? And then we can proceed. Having comments, some people can comment to the motion.
A second. Idiot.
I'm happy to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Oh, we've already have one in.
We do have one.
Are there any other comments on this?
There are comments from me, Madam Chair, if I can. I would ask that we condition it to provide a bicycle parking, that the all windows, we condition it to state all windows fronting north or Palm Canyon be transparent and remain transparent, and that we relook at the landscaping, applicants not in there, that we relook at the landscaping from what was originally approved. If that's acceptable to the motion.
I, I can accept those.
And you?
I think it's Hudson is the.
Oh, I.
Yes, those are acceptable.
Are there any other comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'm calling the question so that we can move along. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We have, we're in, we have two C in front of us. Joseph Lozot on behalf of 1241 South Palm Canyon Trail for conditional use permit to operate an event design center in existing commercial building located at 2001 East Takwitz Canyon Drive. I'm just looking at the commission. Are there many question, will there be many questions on this property? I think there will be none, so if we could have a very abbreviated staff report on this, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. So, well, straight to the point. The only reason this item is before you for a conditional use permit is because the property is Zoned R2. And so an office space used here requires a conditional use permit by the planning commission. And that building was actually built way back in the seventies, and it was previously occupied by a medical office used until about 10 years ago when the medical office used vacated the building and it's been, it's remained vacant since, since that time until the current applicant acquired the building. And they wish to relocate their business currently on Ginatri Trail to this location. They do have a plan to renovate and improve the site. That will be through a minor administrative review process that will be carried out by staff. They do meet the parking requirement. Hours of operation will be from eight to five. In short, staff is recommending the planning commission to approve the CUP. Thank you.
On this item, I am going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? If you'd like to come forward, if you wish to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Vice Chair and members of the commission. My name's Joseph Chikini. I'm an engineer. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Lozote, who has acquired the property at 2001 East on Takwitz Way. I am here, I did some of the drawings and that for him, and also to be able to answer any technical questions that you might have. I would like to just expand a little bit on the project description section that came in the staff report, if I could, please. As you could see, as you know, the, the property is consists of two buildings that are connected by the same roof, common roof area there. And as we've already said, the west, most westerly building was a medical office surgical center. What Mr. Lozote would like to do, he'd like to increase his usable floor space primarily in the western, or exclusively in the westernmost building by occupying some of the covered walkway portion that's already under roof there. He'll be taking about 811 square feet of that. And in that, what that's going to allow him to do is to have a reception area and a conference room and a little bit more additional storage. The, the rest of his improvements are just to the inside of the property, the minor tenant improvements. I wanted to call attention to a couple of things. The laundry area already exists in the west building, so he just fully plans to use it as is. Bathrooms, the west building already has four full-size bathrooms. He only really needs three, and one of which he's going to convert to a fully handicap accessible building. And the other comment that I wanted to make was that, and that's kind of on me, I've labeled an area in the existing building as kitchen. That's really not an appropriate title. It's really just going to be a break room. There'll be a refrigerator and a sink and a microwave. And unless there were any other comments, I didn't have anything else to, to add.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this project?
Thank you for hearing me. I'm Joey Lozot, Joseph, but everyone knows me as Joey.
On the mic, here, right here.
Sorry. I'm super excited about this project. I mean, this poor building has been sitting there for a long time, and I want to make it pretty again. Basically, keep it the same, the same look, but new again. And Palm, Takwitz is in event, event, the event world, I guess, the red carpet to the downtown. And it needs, you, you, we, we put a great median in down the street to make the Takwitz look great. I just want to make the rest of it look great. So I just, super happy to, because I love Palm Springs. I've been here since 91, so, thank you.
Can I have you sign in, please? Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak? I think the applicant does not want to, or do you want to use your three-minute rebuttal time to your own comments? One question for staff before I call the question. The improvements that he was talking about, including the sidewalk, are in a separate minor architectural approval, aren't they?
That's correct.
So they're not before us?
No, the only thing before you is the CUP.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve this.
A second.
We have a second from Commissioner Callardine. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this, or can we call the question? Commissioner Hudson.
Really quick question. I, I really support this project. I think it's a super cool building that I've always noticed. I guess my question is, will this go before the AAC for the minor architectural?
Yes, because it is regarded as a commercial building, so it is required to go before the AAC.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
With that, I have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hirschhorn's made a, oh, Donenfeld has made a second.
Push the button fast.
Can you, can we have a vote on this, please? And just a comment to you, we've gone very quickly because we like the project, and there were absolutely no issues in it. Thank you. Okay, moving right along.
Madam Chair, we're having technical difficulties with the presentation portion of our equipment here. If you'll give us just a couple of minutes to resolve those.
Can we take five minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a five-minute break.
I used to do that when I was working in Palm Springs.
That's when I was going to do it too, but.
I don't know how much money we made.
We're waiting.
247.
John, but I think under the specific.
Listen. They can say. Oh, if they say.
Did you receive my questions, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wages, I mean, what is a prevailing wage mean? Is for only for construction or for operation?
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you so much.
Hi there. How did the election go for Jim? Oh, Jim? Jim? Do we need to offer you congratulations? Did you win your election? I didn't, I was paying attention to, did you re-win?
Listen. They can say it is. Oh, if they said it is.
Yeah.
Wages, I mean, what does prevailing wage mean? Is for only for construction or for operation?
Hi there. How did the election go for Jim? Oh, Jim. Jim? Do we need to offer you congratulations? Did you win your election? I didn't. I was paying attention to. Did you re-win? I'm calling the meeting of the commission back to order. We are on item 2D, Gannett Properties 2014 LLC, for an amendment of a previously approved conditional use permit, adoption of an amendment to a previously approved negative deck, and a major architectural application for a 103,600 square foot cannabis operation and dispensary facility consisting of four separate buildings located at Garnett Road and Interstate 10 off-ramp. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, to give you some background information, the planning commission reviewed this and approved this project on July 11, 2018, and that was for the major architectural, a conditional use permit, and the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration. And at that time, the planning commission approved a 63,650 square foot, one-story cannabis operations facility and a dispensary. The applicant has since come back and revised the application to add a second story to all the buildings that are proposed. And in your staff report, there is a, on page two, there's a table that describes the uses within each of the floor. Floor, so the first floor will be 60,000 square feet of cannabis operations, and the second floor will be 39,950 square feet, for a total of 99,950 square feet of cannabis operations. There, the dispensary is still located in, on the first floor of Building 1A, and that will be 3,650 square feet. That has not changed. So the total square footage of the cannabis operations within the campus is 103,600 square feet. So the applications that are before you today is to amend the conditional use permit to increase the square footage, to adopt an addendum to the previously approved mitigated negative declaration under CEQA, and to approve a major architectural application subject to the attached conditions of approval. So the slide that's here before you shows the revised design of the building, adding a second story. So what it did was increase the height of the building, excuse me, to 30 feet to the top of the roof parapet, I'm sorry, the roof plate, and then 36 feet to the top of the roof parapet that will hide the rooftop-mounted equipment. The project was reviewed by the Architectural Advisory Committee on November 5, 2018, and the AAC recommended approval of the project as presented. So going through some of these slides, you'll see that this is the buildings that are proposed. And, and one of the AAC comments was that, by adding the second story, it actually improves the look of the building. Once again, this is Building 1, Building 2, Building 3, and Building 4. And I'd like to mention that Building 4 is proposed to be two stories in height, but yet only be one story, meaning there'll only be a ground level. There won't be a second roof plate or second story within this building. So the proposal, let me go back to the site plan. The parking that's required is 138 spaces are required, and they are providing 158 parking spaces. So they meet the parking requirements. At the last planning commission meeting, you reviewed lighting plan, floor plans, landscaping plan. None of that has changed, and I have not included it in today's presentation. The addendum that was done for the CEQA analysis was performed by TerraNova, who did the original initial study, and Nicole is here to discuss that addendum to you. The only impacts that were determined was that the traffic count would increase by 62 trips, and the mitigated negative declaration would not require any kind of change or update. So within that document, there are mitigation measures in terms of cultural resources and biological resources, and those feel that we can negate them to lessen significant impacts. So in your staff report, there are findings that the planning commission would need to make for a conditional use permit, noticing did go out to all Jason and Budding property owners within 500 feet. And that concludes my report, and the applicant is here.
Questions for staff, Commissioner Callardine?
Question for, in terms of process, are we just approving an amendment to the previously approved CUP, and we should not be looking at the underlying one that we previously approved, or are we looking at the whole thing again?
It's an amendment to the approved conditional use permit to increase the square footage.
So we probably shouldn't look at the whole balance of the previously approved project?
My understanding is it's in front of us.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Specifically before you this morning is the amendment to the CUP to allow the additional expansion. However, to the extent that that expansion affects, you know, the, the project as a whole, you can certainly consider that. That being said, if the planning commission does not approve it, then the owner would still have the vested right under the existing CUP to develop the first-floor project at the 60,000 square foot level.
Commissioner John Enfield?
This has probably been discussed before, because while I was gone, I think you had a number of cannabis facilities to look at. My question is, is in particularly with respect to the quality of the air, and in particular, any odors coming out of the facilities. When Nicole does her negative mitigated declaration, and she finds something that is of significance but that can be mitigated, how is it typically, when you're dealing with odors, because this is a particularly concern with these kinds of facilities, how do you analyze that? And do you look at the statute in place for cannabis in the city as far as what the venting requirements are to make a determination as whether that could be mitigated properly based on those standards? Does that make sense to you?
Yes. There, there is no quantified standard. There, unlike noise, which has decibels, air quality for odor does not have a number associated with it.
There's no smell test?
Well, other than the subjective one, no. That there are, and, and as with everything dealing with cannabis, this is definitely evolving in all of the jurisdictions that we're working in. However, you do have municipal code standards that are standard requirements that mitigate the environmental impact from a CEQA perspective, and CEQA allows that. And that is to say that you have provisions in your code and conditions of approval that you're imposing that looks at the technology that's proposed to control odor and, and requires that odor be controlled. That those standards under CEQA are acceptable mitigation for, to, to reduce an impact. The, the types of air circulation systems that are required, we're finding that most cities are adjusting as they go, because different things work for different things. In the case of a new building here, that is much easier to control than when we're going into an existing building, which has.
Would you say that the, that our ordinance is a state-of-the-art control mechanism with respect to odors? Because that sounds like it's venting and carbon filtering, basically.
The, the carbon filters seem to be extremely effective. The other, the other option that we're seeing in, in, in a number of applications are HVAC systems that create negative space, that is to say, they are entirely enclosed, and there is no, the, the, there is a, it's almost like vacuum sealing the building. Those two methods seem to be the most effective for controlling odor.
And that's what you look to, to establish the appropriate mitigation?
The standards in the code, and that the applicant is complying with the standards.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question along the same lines, and it's probably for Flynn. As I'm looking at planning condition number four, this was done before you instituted a consultant chosen by the city to review the odor mitigation plan. Shouldn't we have language, now that we have a chance to put in consistent language that we've utilized in other projects?
The, the applicant was required to submit an odor mitigation plan, and that was reviewed by a consultant. That condition can be added here if, if you so choose to add it.
Even if it's been done, we can add it so that we, we are consistent?
Yes.
And do you want to answer the question in terms of the consultant's review for Commissioner Donenfeld?
Right, so in there, I don't have it in front of me, and I apologize, I should have included in the, in your packet. I don't have the exact findings in front of me, so I can't exactly respond. But in, in review of building permits and through the plan check process, we will follow the conditions that the odor mitigation plan is met.
So you, you will review the odor mitigation plan?
Right, the consultant has reviewed the odor mitigation plan, but when the plans come in, we don't have the construction documents before us at this time. We will review to make sure that those, what's proposed meets that condition.
By having, by adding a second story, do you have different considerations with respect to the adequate venting of the odors? Anything different by adding a second story?
I think it would be the same, similar.
To go back to Madam Chair's question in terms of a condition of approval, what I would recommend that we do is we include what will become our standard condition of approval as we looked at on the ANZA facility, as that went before City Council, is that the odor mitigation plan shall be reviewed by the city's consultant. The applicant will be required to implement any recommendations from the consultant's review of the project, something along those lines, so that not only does it require the independent review, but also the implementation.
And it required a response within 24 hours for any odor complaints, I believe.
Correct, that's standard language.
Maybe going back while you were up here, do you want to say whether you thought there was any change with the expansion of the facility, the grow and the manufacturing facilities?
The increase, there was a moderate increase in traffic. Cultivation is not a, a large generator of traffic. The primary traffic generator is the dispensary in this case. That, we did have the traffic evaluated by a traffic engineer. This was not our analysis. They, they looked at the analysis again. As we've discussed in these meetings, the standard for, the ITE standard for, for cultivation has not been established. It has been for dispensaries. We are still comparing with manufacturing uses, and this is a consistent traffic generator with a manufacturing use.
Are there other questions on the environmental impact addendum? Are there any other questions for staff on the project? Why don't we bring the applicant, let's open the public hearing. The applicant has 10 minutes. And if you could go through some of the design issues with this, I think those, people will have questions on those.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. James Chelfy, architect. I won't take 10 minutes of your time this morning. I know you've been here a long time already. The building footprint didn't change a bit, nor did the landscaping, nor did the parking. Those sort of things all remained the same. The plate remains the same. We added some height to the buildings to enable some additional operations in the, in the facility. We actually think the buildings look better. I think Commissioner Hudson was at that AAC meeting and agreed, they're not quite a squat. We added about six feet of height to the, to the concrete buildings. We embellish the eyebrows a little bit. We added a little bit more architectural eyebrow to the dispensary building to call attention to it, because it's kind of retail use. And other than that, it's, it's a pretty benign situation. It's almost identical to what it was. It just kind of went like this. And I wanted to make a point, too, about, there was a condition or about block walls and wrought iron fencing. Just want to clarify that it's predominantly wrought iron fence, and that's for the police department. They want to be able to see into the property. There'll be some block wall, perhaps some block wall pilasters or something like that, but it's a wrought iron fenced project. Want to make sure that's clear. And happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, and let me see if there are any members of the public first who wish to speak on this item. There being no members of the public, if you'd stay up for questions from the commission, if there are questions. I have one if people, other people don't. Mine would be about the eyebrow, the two-story eyebrow. It's the only thing in the project I have a concern with is just, for me, as I look at it, it creates a little bit of dissonance. Is there a reason why that has to be two stories, and it can't follow the posture of the other eyebrows?
We like the dissonance in that element. Sorry to say, maybe we don't agree, but we thought it brought attention to that. That's the dispensary, and that, that eyebrow could also provide for some second-level office space. So that's why we wanted the glass up that high. That could be part of the administrative. So there's a reason for it.
Are there other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Marutse?
I'm just wondering, why did you add a second story? What was the need for it?
We had the room. We had the parking, and we had the room. And so the client, the applicant, wanted to bear a little additional cost. The percentage of cost addition is just a percentage of the overall plate, so it made sense. And, and it's still overparked, and the reason for that is, if it ever reverts back to an office warehouse project, it wants to go back to 500 feet per, per square foot. So that's why we did that, and we left the parking. Thank you. Sure.
Thank you very much.
Oh, no, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry.
During our first discussion on the CUP, there was a discussion about providing showers for employees. We don't have the benefit of the, of the floor plans. Is that still being provided? I don't see it as a condition.
We don't have floor plans yet, so that'll be part of a process down the road, thus part of a tenant improvement plan. These are just shell buildings right now. We, if you want to make that a condition, we can certainly do that. We've, we've done other facilities with those.
Thank you.
Question for staff, I believe it was a condition of the first approval. Am I correct?
I know it was discussed. If I missed it, I'll go back and review and add that.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Anything else?
I think that's it. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Just to move us along, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this.
A second.
With, let me finish. With a couple of conditions, that showers be added. I believe we had indoor bike facilities in the earlier approval, so to make sure that those items are included. And in, in, except, to change PLN 4 to the standard conditions in terms of hiring a consultant to review the items being, the applicant being required to do the review and the 24-hour turnaround. With those, we've got three separate motions, I think. Would those all come on the modification, Flynn?
You can actually do those as one motion and one vote, which includes the amendment to the conditional use permit, and also includes the adoption of the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration.
Fine, so in, and making the findings that are in the staff report. Are there any comments on the motion? Commissioner Marutse?
Just to reiterate what I said the last time this came around, this is exactly the right location for this type of facility, right next to the freeway. So I'm very supportive of this project and its location.
And it's new, so that the odor control, it's not near residential, and the odor control can be good. So we have a motion, we have a second. The conditions have been accepted, I'm correct. Can we call the question? This is approved 7-0, thank you very much.
Great project.
We have, we're breaking at noon, Flynn?
Correct, we'll go ahead and continue and complete whatever items that we're discussing anytime after noon, with the idea that we'll come back at 1:30 PM.
So for people who are here, the only item I believe we will get to before we break for noon is 2E, which is the major architectural. for noon is 2E, which is the major architectural on the 30-unit suite hotel. So if you are here for a different project, you might want your free, free to, we won't take anything else, and we won't, we'll only do 2E. Okay, 2E. Three times five Palm Springs LLC, request for a conditional use permit and a major architectural application approval to construct a 30-room suite hotel with kitchens in each unit, a common building with coffee bar, and an event space on an undeveloped 1.83 acre parcel located at 244, through 282 South Indian Canyon Drive. Flynn, we had left the public hearing open on this one. Will we go through a new applicant presentation or will it just be a staff report?
We can do it both ways, Madam Chair. There have been some revisions to the site plan. It might be helpful for the applicant to just walk us through what those changes were.
Okay, great. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. So on November 14, 2018, this item was presented to you, and at that time, the commission voted to continue the item to a date certain of December 12, 2018. And you also give very specific directions to the applicant at the time. Number one, you asked that the number of hotel units be reduced. Number two, to provide adequate parking for the project. And number three, to remove the parking along Caye and Celia from the required number of parking. Our staff has received a revised site plan and revised plan from the applicant that addressed those issues and some more. So I'm just going to take a minute to go through that before we call the applicant to talk a little bit more on the design. So here we go. You did also ask that, again, parking on Caye and Celia to be removed from required parking count, and that rooftop mechanical equipment to be screened on all sides, and that the applicant to provide additional architectural variations to the north and south-facing elevations, to provide enhanced paving along driveways and around courtyard areas, to enhance the particle share along Indian Canyon Drive elevation, and to indicate the bicycle rack location on the site plan, again, to reduce the number of proposed units and the hotel keys, and provide one parking space per hotel key. So we did receive a revised plan, which is in your package, along with an updated traffic management plan submitted by the applicant. So these are the changes that have been made. Number one, the, the site plan has been-
Hold on one second, please. We have two commissioners here who weren't here for the original presentation. Were you able, either of you able to listen to the tape? Or do you, if you need additional information that isn't coming in this? The only comment I don't think is accurate is to provide one parking space per hotel key. I think there was a more general comment about providing additional parking. Okay, so, but if you, if you have questions, either of you, as he's going through the staff report, feel free to ask them so we make sure that you're caught up.
Okay, so these are the changes that have been made to the, to the plan. So on, currently on the screen, we have the revised site plan at the top and the original site plan at the bottom. So the revised plan does show that the number of hotel units have been reduced from 36 to 30. The hotel key, the lockoffs have been reduced from 49 to 36. There are now 47 parking spaces that are provided onsite. That's an increase from 40 to 47. And Building B have been moved slightly southward by up to five feet to create variations on the north-
Can you, can you point that out?
Absolutely. So if you look at, this is the original site plan, and this is Building B right here. You notice that there's been a movement of sort of this whole building a little bit southward for about five feet to create about five feet variation from the rest of this facade. This is the old site plan. You can see this was all on a linear plan, but that movement has created additional space here. You also asked that the applicant provide enhanced pavement, paving along this driveway area, and here are those enhanced pavings that have been, that have been provided. And while I'm here, I also want to add that, if you recall, on the original plan, we have the trash enclosures on the southwest end of the site and on the northeast end of the site. Those two have been relocated to the northwest side of the location. So those are some of the major revisions that have been made, and I'm sure the architect would like to elaborate more on those.
Edward, where's the additional parking?
So they were able to provide additional parking on the north side of the site, and also recall that this is the old plan again. This landscape area was slightly shifted, and additional parking spaces were parked here. Your direction was that this area would now be included in the overall. So overall, we now have 47 parking spaces on the site.
Thank you.
So I've already talked about the enhanced paving area. The parking spaces along Caye and Celia are no longer a part of the, part of the overall parking count. So go back real quick on the elevations to see the, the changes that have been made on the elevations. So on the north side of the elevations, you notice that there's been a change. You wanted to see how this would look like with the perforated metal plates that will be added. So this is a new addition, and you can see the difference that's been provided. And finally, I did mention that the two trash enclosures have been relocated, and bicycle parking area has been included in, on, at the north side of the lobby area. The original conditions that were proposed by staff remains the same to address the issue of parking. The applicant has agreed to those, and they do have more lies to share than that. So in fact, that will conclude staff report. I'm available to answer any question that you may have. And as I mentioned, the applicant, the applicant's architect and the developer would like to make a presentation to you as well. Thank you.
Questions for staff, starting with Commissioner Woods, if you have them?
Edward, I have quite a few questions, so bear with me a minute. It will take us, hopefully, before lunch. First of all, I just want to reiterate, because the parking study that was submitted has several different numbers for the amount of parking spaces. It's got 45, another place is 49, the site plan says 47, your staff report says 47. I want to, I want to confirm that they're providing 47 onsite spaces.
That is correct. It is 47 units.
And I wanted to confirm that they're getting what they call hotel units, and there's 30 of those.
That's correct, also.
Right, but there's 36 keys.
From 49, it's been reduced from 49 to 36.
Correct. And the 36 keys means there's 36 different rentable units, total.
You can say that, yeah.
Okay. Do we know how many of these units, on the multi-bedroom units, have bathrooms? So if you have a two-bedroom unit, it was hard for me to read the plan, and maybe we can get that information after lunch if you don't have it.
Yeah, I will, I do have a breakdown of the number of rooms, but I will have, yeah, I can provide you that number after lunch.
Okay. There was a chart I didn't quite understand, and let me just find it a minute. I'm sorry, I thought I detailed everything. And it was really about the number of rental rooms that, and maybe you can help me find it. The number of rooms that had to be rented for an event space of 50, when the event space is used for 50 people or the event space is used for 100 people. There was a chart in the report. I'm just trying to find that chart if I could, because I'd like just further clarification on that. Again, if I can't find it right now, we can come to it after lunch, after the break.
Absolutely. Is that chart in the traffic study?
I thought it was in the traffic study, and I thought I had flagged it, but obviously I didn't flag it.
Okay.
And we can come back to it. But I just want, because what I had to deal with was hotel occupancy related to the use of the event space for a certain number of people. I didn't quite understand what was trying to be stated in that.
Yeah, the applicant is going to elaborate more on that. They are aware of that.
You know, Madam Chair, if I can reserve time to come back later, that'd be fine. Thank you.
I believe it's in this portion and near the, near the back.
Yeah, just to clarify my one question. It is in the, what you call the PC feedback summary, and it is the third page, fourth page from the back. And it's called exhibit event parking plan. And I didn't quite understand, because the parking demand is always 14, and I just needed some explanation on it.
Okay, so you do have specific questions on that, or?
I just needed it explained to me. I'm not sure that I'm clear what it, what it's saying.
What we would ask is that the applicant will explain that, since this exhibit was provided by the applicant. And so if we could have them go through that.
That's all for now, Madam Chair. I'll come back later.
Commissioner Marutse, if you have questions?
I think I'll wait to, my issues relate to the parking study, so I guess I should wait until the parking study's presented.
Commissioner Hudson, Commissioner Hertzberg. Commissioner Donenfeld?
One question. With respect to the parking management plan, will that, is that being incorporated in the conditions of approval, and have they all, have all of these suggestions been agreed to by the applicant previously?
Yes, yes, they have. And there are, so if you look at the original staff report, there are about 10, nine different conditions directly from the, yeah, those, those will be incorporated into the, if the planning commission saw direct, those will be incorporated into the conditions of approval.
And I take it that, and Nicole looking at this, she was satisfied that the parking management plan is a sound plan for, she didn't look at it. She did not look at it.
No, so, but, but we have the city's traffic engineer, unfortunately, no longer with the city, but prior to his departure, he did review this and was in agreement with it.
And they think these are realistic ways to get people to use alternative methods of transportation and to mitigate the traffic issue.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we're done.
Question on Colley and Celia. We're now longer, no longer counting the angle parking there as part of the project, but it looks as though we're still providing the angle parking. Is that the case?
That's correct, because that is encouraged by the tribe and the Section 14 specific plan.
Is, is that the plan for that part of Celia is to have the angle parking?
That's correct.
Okay. One other question about the conditions on the fire department. Is it my imagination or are there suddenly, it seems, their conditions seem to have grown a lot on this project and some of the other ones. Are we, are we getting new conditions from them?
No, those are the same. They remain the same. And they've been consistent with, with the two other projects that you've reviewed relative to this site in the past.
I just don't recall anyone, any ones quite as extensive as this one. That could be, my guess, getting old.
Excuse me?
Never mind. I won't repeat it.
I, some questions in the city, and their parking questions. The city didn't count every room. Are there still 90 rooms and just 36 keys, or did they reduce the number of rooms?
Yeah, the number of rooms have been reduced overall.
From what to what?
From 90, I can, can I come back after lunch to give you that specific number?
Yes. Then, and we're just about, and the city required, said the city's requirement was 70 parking spaces, one per key, and not one per, hold on, and one per key and not one per room, plus additional parking, parking requirements for the common space, making it typically 70. I'm wondering, as I'm looking at that, I still have a lot of questions on parking, but I'm looking at the event space, and when you're putting 150 people there, saying that 27 of the rooms need to be rented to be able to have 150-person event, where are you thinking the rest of the people are going to be parked? And how can we allow event space with, with this amount of parking reduction?
So to go back to the first part of your question, the, the overall count no longer stands at 70, because the number of hotel units have been reduced from 39 to, from 36 to 30. So if we go by the provision of Section 9306 of the code, that will reduce that overall requirement to 62. So the number of hotel rooms have been reduced, so is the number, the, the size of the square footage of the, the common building. So that brought down the number of spaces to be required. So on the second part of your question, that is what the, that question is being addressed by the parking management plan, and if all the recommendations are implemented, we, staff believe that the parking issue can be addressed. May not be to 100, to, to the degree or to the extent of 100%. However, we do believe that those issues can be mitigated.
With that, we will go to the public hearing when we get back. If there are any other questions, otherwise we are at noon. So I will take questions from the commission to staff, if we have any. Otherwise, we'll adjourn until 1:30.